Since there is no one here from the Ministerial Association, Mr. Parker, we just open this meeting in prayer.
You bet. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity we have to meet together in this public meeting. We thank thee, Father, for the opportunity to serve within our community. We thank thee for the blessings of life that we enjoy and share. We ask thee, Father, at this time to bless our community. We pray that thou would bless those who are seeking to improve Fayette County. Wilt thou please bless them and their efforts? We pray for the elected officials, that thou would bless them with wisdom and guidance. We thank thee for the many blessings that thou has given us again, and pray that thou would bless our community with an outpouring of prosperity in the areas where we need it, specifically with employment and jobs for those who are seeking them. We also pray, Father, for those in our community who are sick or are mourning the loss of loved ones. Wilt thou please help them as well? Now, we thank thee for everything again, and ask that thy blessings be upon us. Bless this meeting with thy Spirit, that a spirit of communication and inspiration might be here. We ask it humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I call this meeting Fayette County Commissioners to order. Please stand for questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes from our previous meeting?
I'll move to approve the next of last meeting. Second?
You did move to second. In all favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Mr. Parker, you're first on my agenda here, so would you like to present your report?
You bet. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
I've given you a little detailed outline of my comments this morning. I'm not going to read this whole page, but I do think it's worth noting, just for the public's information and those that are viewing these proceedings on Channel 3, that our group's main function, the Economic Development Group's main function, is business retention, expansion, and attraction. And that attraction is to new industry and business here in Fayette County. It's also worth noting that we are heavily involved with job creation and workforce development. And we've done, we've made some real strides with workforce development with the property that we own. We currently have Manpower Eastern Indiana Works, which, for your information, is the old Work One. At one time, I think it was ASG, the Alliance for Strategic Growth. So they've had a third name change. It's now Eastern Indiana Works. And then we also house the ICAP, the Inter-Local Community Action Program, which is a holdover from the Johnson era. I think it was a Johnson, Lyndon Johnson program to help distressed families with a multitude of issues. PDG has been helping Fayette County become a certified ACT work rated community, which goes hand in hand with the workforce development. We are one of only six counties in the state of Indiana that is a certified ACT work rated community. Worth mentioning that we do still manage the Urban Enterprise Association, and we use the urban enterprise zone tax advantages for business attraction and to help with the existing businesses in the zone. We offer a strong linkage to the ISBCA, or DC, I always get that mixed up, Indiana Small Business Development Center. They have a wealth of information to businesses. We have a lot of businesses come in the door and say, "I'd like a building. I'd like to start a business." And usually, the next question on my mouth is, "Do you have a business plan?" And they look at you kind of strange, like, "No, I make a really mean pepper steak, and I want to go into business." And it's a lot more than being able to create a food item or just have a service. And typically, we turn them around to Scott Underwood from Richmond, and he will typically come down here and meet with those people wanting to go into business and give them direction. And so we appreciate their help in Fayette County. And we also facilitate change in the county. We help with low interest revolving loans. And we're involved in a lot of community development with a number of different boards and organizations. And I won't list all of those, but you have those in front of you. To date, this year, we've responded to seven RFIs. And we've had one out of state inquiry on the city-owned 58 acres, which continues to evolve. I hope that that comes to fruition. I'll be glad to share details about that with you privately. We've shown the industrial center building three times this year, twice to out of state businesses, and once to one local industry. And we have a couple of businesses interested in the only remaining vacant acreage in the industrial park that we continue to work with. And I might say, there's a lot of going on behind the scenes that I can't share with you, a lot of moving with industry, all the ones that you know, you're familiar with in Fayette County, that we work hand in hand with them on a number of different issues that we help them with. One of the things I included in your little packet there was, I believe, an RFI that we received yesterday. And I've kind of omitted names and some of the other pertinent information that would identify who this is. But this is kind of what we run into. We have the land. We have a relatively flat rectangular shape. We have a zone industrial. We're on the cusp of 10 miles to a four-lane divided highway at that 58 acres. But then you see no residential subdivisions within one mile, and that's directly across the street. And then the second one is outside of the 100-year, 500-year floodplain. That property is in the floodplain, the south edge of it, the border's along 450. There's about 10 acres of it that is in the 100-year floodplain. And I don't know that I've ever seen a 500-year floodplain. I don't know where that would go. I imagine it would be something else. So those, and then we also run into the single tenant. You see, newer construction, maximum 10 years old. The building we own, as you know, goes back to the late 18, I think the earliest construction I note on our plans is 1910. So now it says remodels and upgrades and improvements over the years, but I think the last of those was 1967, which is 51 years ago. So we were kind of challenged on some of these things. So if you see, we've responded to the number of RFIs, I say seven. There are probably seven to 10 others that I couldn't respond to because of these kind of qualifiers or stipulations, which is troubling to say the least, because I know that we, probably these businesses that can give us a look would be interested. But when they set these types of parameters, it's difficult. Any questions to this point? I'm going to close here with these two events that I'd like to let you and the public know about. The first is at the Milling Building, April the 3rd, from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. This is a Purdue University is coming to help us with a, it's a workshop for our downtown and to incorporate a healthy community. There'll be a lunch served. And to register for this, you'll need to call the extension office to get the link and then register. We're looking at about 50 to 60 people, and business owners, elected officials, community leaders are who we're looking at. Certainly, there's an interested public member that wants to register and come to that. It won't be turned away. That's on the 3rd. Then on the 10th is the event with Dr. Roberto Gerardo. And he's going to be speaking about e-commerce, a look at the future, and how it will affect all of Fayette County. And this guy is very good. I've seen him. Leota has seen him.
Yes.
He's already done his presentation in Randolph, Wayne, and Union. And I purposely held off, thinking that the weather would be a little better. It's not today. But by the 10th of April, certainly, the weather will be a little better. And that would give us time to prepare well for him. So there'll also be a supper at that event. And to register for this, all you need to do is call our office at 827-1366. And again, we're looking at business owners, elected officials, leaders of community, service clubs, those that are involved with change in our community today, and those that want to be, are certainly welcome to attend either one of these events.
The one on April 3rd, I think Commissioners, may be a little late because that's the same day as our first meeting of the month of April.
Okay. That's from 10:00 till 3:00.
Yes.
So that may run out. Come late.
Well, that's what I told Becky. I've already registered for that one, and I'm very excited about the things that are going on. Certainly want to hear Dr. Gerardo again with his presentation.
Well, that would be, that's Tuesday the 10th, and that starts at 6:00 p.m.
Yes.
So that's a good one. Well, I encourage everybody to come to that. He's fantastic. If you have no more questions for me, I'm going to leave you with a parting gift here. Beware of Greeks bearing gifts up with. This just came out yesterday. Fayette County's got a little piece in that. And there's a nice article on Bridgeford Cheese in there that they've gotten.
I received a copy of the gift, but I hadn't read it yet.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Appreciate what you've done, Dan.
Thank you.
Mr. Corr? You got the report?
Getting oil this week. Iron up that tank this week. Cliff's coming down from the total patcher. He's going to be there. We're getting 890 for fill it up, start getting them out. Got the spray patches all ready. Just need oil put in them. Culvers, we'll start on them next week. Spring break up there, but this all depends on the weather. Spring break, the kids are out. Over the next week, around Harrisburg, so that's going to be a mess. But we're going to do what we can while they're out of school. We're going to try to get our two biggest ones done, because we're not sure what we're getting into on some of them up there. And then on them quotes I got for Millings, Leota, I don't know. I haven't told you about it, but I've talked to Mark and Gary about them. I think I'm going to get another quote off a company out of Rushfield. I'm going to crush up the Millings that we've got, down to at least the 53 size or smaller. And then I'll get another quote from them first before we go any further on that. There's big chunks in them. We ain't going to lay them down, but they got big chunks in them.
Very good.
And then I'd like to see about getting three quotes on the backhoe. Try to get us a new backhoe, Dale. It's the JCB we've got. We're having issues. Everything being obsolete on it. That's just one piece of equipment that we need to replace our box pretty soon, too. If you guys don't mind, I'd like to get three quotes on three different backhoes if we can.
Richard, go ahead and tell them about the other situations we got on some of the equipment that needs replacing.
Well, I hate bringing it up, but.
Bring it up. It's got to be.
I don't know where to start. I have, I know we've got some new trucks down there, but we've got three old trucks that run in three areas that if, they're in pretty bad shape. Really bad shape. Three tandems. They really need replaced. Our chip box, it's working on its second engine, so what else have we got down here? Well, the backhoe, it's in pretty bad shape. We've got transmission issues going on with it. Right now, we're trying to find a new piece that goes into linkage on the transmission. We're having issues on that. We've got one single axle we've had to part, because you can see it pumped through the bottom of the cab, and it's coming off the frame itself. We've got new grade all, and the three new trucks we've got, that's about the best things we've got right now going forward.
Richard, when I was Commissioner before, we tried to institute a truck replacement policy of one truck a year.
Yeah.
I think at the time, we had like 10 trucks online or something like that at that time. And that would make a 10-year-old truck would be the oldest truck if we replaced one a year. And I realize some years ago passed, they bought four, five, or six at a time. And we financed that. But I just wonder if we couldn't write that, get back to a truck a year, and in that way, we.
Like a rotation. I think that's what really needs to be done down there. But it needs to be in writing and somehow locked in where we keep doing that. Because what we got now, just like with the old grade all, we was blessed to get the new grade all. But the old one we had, we hardly got anything out of that. And what we get, what we're dealing with now is our old stuff. By the time it's worn out, by the time we're able to get something else, we're just, we're better off to take the thing to integrity and get a couple bucks. Then you have no trade-in value on anything we've got left.
And you take a 10-year-old truck that's been used by the highway department every day, and it's.
It eats it up.
It's enough, I mean, it's done.
Yeah.
Really. I mean, it has a little bit of value to it, but that we could sell on an auction, county auction. But maybe most vendors won't want to take it in on trade, that 10-year-old truck. But if we could get back on that plan, I think that would.
That'd be a big.
Benefit.
Yeah.
The department. The large equipment, we need to create some type of a, if it's going, if it's going to take a payback plan of three years or four years financing per piece of equipment, then we need to create a plan that we're replacing a new piece of equipment, major equipment, every three or four years. When one's paid for, then we go.
Go for something else.
We go purchase another one.
And our loader, it's not far from that either. I mean, another year and a half, it's, you can see it pumped through the steps now. They're just rotted out. We've got it patched here and there, but.
So, I mean, we've got to, you know, we've got to start looking at, I don't know. I can't remember when the grade all's going to be paid for. Is it next year?
Well, we just started, but we never got to pay it. We had first year free on that.
Right. So we made two of five.
Two of five, okay. So we need to start looking at, trying to set up some kind of schedule.
Yeah.
We either do a two major pieces or one major piece, and then put a truck every year in the budget, yearly budget, to pay for it, rather than financing the trucks.
The, that's the, the three trucks that we run, that's in really, really bad shape. We don't run them through the summer, because we try to save what's left of them for the winter. I just, we have one broke down this morning, so.
Have you decided whether today is spring or winter? I'm sorry about that.
Don't worry. We got other things to do.
Yep. Okay.
I think that's about it.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Sidoff.
Good morning. We had a pre-construction meeting in Greenfield for Bridge 25. And the contractor wants to start work clearing and erosion control measures and log jam removal, probably April the 2nd. And then closure, he's scheduling tentatively of April the 9th. And then Bridge 90 has been advertised, requests for proposals for design consultants. And the deadline is April the 27th at noon for that. And then I thought on May the 3rd, May 1st, we would select a consultant then, maybe in the afternoon. And we postponed the community crossings bid opening till April the 3rd. We saw the email, advertising problems.
Yes.
Okay. And that's all I have for today. Questions?
On Bridge 25, one would be tentatively closing it on April 9th.
Yeah.
When's the final reopening date?
In November, first week in November.
Okay, all right.
Have you notified the school corporation?
Probably Jim. When they closure, we'll probably talk to the school corporation once we know.
Because they've got a lot of buses to reroute.
Yeah, yeah.
I think right now, they've got 15 a day goes over that bridge.
Yes. It depends on where they have kindergarten.
Yes.
I guess.
Technically, they're supposed to give them 14-day notice.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
When will he be putting some signage up to notify the closing, for the closings?
It'd probably be that week. Just lay it on the ground, and then the knife, you know, open them up, close, put them up.
He won't be putting any pre-warning signs up?
I don't think there's any.
They should be. They should have pre-warning signs 14 days in advance of the road closure.
Okay.
I will be meeting with the contractor this afternoon.
Will that be your, I mean, will you be responsible to see that the contractor gets those signs up? Okay, all right, Jim. Thanks.
Yeah.
All right.
Very good.
Okay.
Mr. King.
Morning. The copier was delivered for the clerk last week. The technician was here to set it up yesterday. However, the finishing unit was damaged, either in shipping or between, shipping from the manufacturing point to the truck, I'm not sure which, but he has ordered a replacement. We're waiting for that to come in. Once that's come in, he'll set up that machine. The extension office would like to get another phone down there. I got paperwork to do that, but then I realized that we have an extra phone that is not being used in the clerk's office. I see no problem with moving it downstairs, but I want to make sure that's okay with you guys.
Not another number, just a physical phone?
Yeah. Well, basically, it's going to be moving that extension from the clerk's office down there. And it hasn't been used in the three years I've been here. It's from when they cut employees a couple of years back. Good thing to report is that we've gone down from hacking attempts with some of my blocks that I have up. Last weekend, we had one, two different IPs. One was from somewhere in the Middle East. I can't remember what country it was. The other one was from Britain. Had over 450 bad logins that they had tried on two different accounts. I blocked those out, and now we're down at 36, which is generally your, this person forgot their password. You know, this person needs to change theirs. It's just your regular daily stuff, which is what we want. So whether or not that trend will continue, I don't know. But it's at least a hopeful sign that maybe they've chosen another target and gotten away from us. The final thing I wanted to bring up is, I know we've got the county auction coming up that we're trying to get things together for. I have a bunch of old computers. We've parted out a bunch of old computers, stripped them down to the case and gotten rid of the cases. And I just wanted to see if it was okay to put some of those old machines that we've got left that we don't need parts from into the auction, just strip out the hard drive and go, "Here's a computer with no hard drive." I just, if you don't think that it'll sell, or it'll just be in the way in the auction, I'm fine with stripping those out and getting rid of them. But I wasn't sure what your guys' thoughts were on that.
You're the expert. Do you see value in them?
I don't know. I mean, if it were me going to an auction, I wouldn't buy them. I mean, they're five and six-year-old machines.
That are antiquated.
Okay. So I'll just continue, I'll just strip out what few parts we can use and take them out to transfer station. So I did get one quote from Ron Best to replace individual cameras. Looking about $442 on that quote. I've got to double check the camera model. This is to put one on Fourth Street that has more of a wide-angle panoramic view and also replace one of the ones up here on the north stairs that's gone bad. You know, the cameras have been outside for three years, so some of them, it's just exposure that's getting to them. So I'm trying to see if I can get another company to give me a quote, just so I have something to compare against. But every company that I've gotten a quote for before has been either from Richmond or from Indianapolis, and they charge port-to-port. So you're automatically adding $140 for the trip. Without any additional parts or labor, just simply, hey, we've driven here. So, but that's all I have for the morning. Anything for me?
Michael, are you still researching off-site backup?
Yes.
Or are we getting any closer to that?
All the ones I've still talked to have been in the $15,000 to $14,000 range per year. I'm trying to see if we can find some other options. But as of yet, I have not found anything. I'm still doing it the old-fashioned way of putting on a hard drive, taking the hard drive over and stashing it somewhere offsite, and then bringing it, you know, continually doing a switch of that. So it's not ideal. It's kind of a pain in the butt, but it's better than nothing. And right now, we lose about a week's worth of data if something catastrophic happened to the building, like the building burned down or something, so.
So have you created some kind of a goal as far as deadline to try to get this down?
Well, definitely by July, because I would like to get that into the new budget cycle for next year, one way or another.
Okay.
I'd like to get something planned.
So we're looking at next year's budget for that, okay.
Yeah, because that's what, kind of what we ran into. And you're talking $15,000, $16,000. It's not something that is just a drop in the hat. If it was $5,000, I'd be like, "Let's go." But when you start talking $15,000, $16,000 or more, and yeah, the cost is, it's hard to justify sometimes to the council, to get them to see just how much that would cost us if something happened. And much less if we get one of those ransom wares like some of these counties have gotten, where it's $50,000, $200,000, $300,000 to get things unlocked, so.
Well, is, when we talk about off-site backup, are we talking about the cloud? Is it cloud-based or?
I've seen both. I've seen some of them that say they're cloud-based. I've seen both. I've seen some of them that say they're cloud-based, some of them that just have their own servers. The only difference is cloud-based means that there are 50 servers assigned to that process and your data may be saved between five or six of them. The other ones, some of the companies just have their own individual servers and server is with them. So that could also be called cloud-based or it could be called server-based. It's just, it's kind of semantics at that point. But ultimately, it's saved the same way. It processes data from here, sends it off to be stored elsewhere, and they catalog where it's stored, and then if there's a problem, they send us the data back. So like I said, it's kind of semantics.
Is it something that we could possibly create ourselves and?
That's one of the things I've been looking at.
Another business here in town that we could?
Well, we have TD3 and City Hall, so I mean, I, I have, I am looking to see if I can find some kind of software option to where even if we had to pay, um, for argument's sake, I'll say $100. We had to pay $100 more per month at both locations, internet cost-wise, to up the connections to be faster. You know, that would add $2,400 a year for our internet cost total, plus the equipment. But if I could find something that would bring it to a total of roughly $6,000 to $7,000 in cost between software, equipment, internet cost, I'm fine with that too. I mean, I'm trying to find what is the most viable option for us. You know, one of the advantages some of these companies have, they have the $14,000, $15,000. They, they promise a very short turnaround time of.
Taking that back to data back to.
You have, you have a system go down, you put a new hard drive in there, they connect to it a certain way and get the data back on there within 24 hours or less is what some of the promises are. So there is the advantage of that, whereas if we do it ourselves, we don't have that level of service if there is a more complex problem, means more labor, that kind of thing. So it's one of those, what's the cost on the front end, what's the cost on the back end, what's the labor cost if something happens? So I'm trying to look at all that stuff, so.
I appreciate the information.
Thank you very much.
Judge Freeman.
Good morning.
Morning Judge, how are you?
Uh, I'm all right. Bad news. You know, if I'm showing up right, you know what it's about, right? Okay.
It's always bad.
So yeah, I know. I'm Mr. Bad News, but, uh, so, crime knocked down. Public defender appointments are maintaining or fluctuating around the mean and maybe even slightly trending up. And so as you know, from fourth quarter last year, we got the results from the Public Defenders Council about the, uh, commission rather, about the caseloads on our public defender contractors. And four out of five of them were non-compliant and the fifth one was right on the line. And they gave us a quarter to watch and see. We had a peculiar number of F6 felonies in the third quarter last year, particularly high. And we thought maybe that would go back down to its norms and it would take care of itself. So they didn't make us do anything when they saw these numbers in the, in the third quarter, which they told us in the fourth quarter, there's two months of lag before they give you the results. Well, the fourth quarter's in now, because here we are at the end of the first quarter of the next year and things did not get better. So I got a nasty email, business-like and professional, but it was nasty in its effect, uh, that things did not get better and we had to take some sort of immediate action. They wanted to meet with us, and by us, I think they meant the judges and Mr. Eldridge, chairman of our local Public Defenders Council, and, uh, you know, what are we going to do about it? And if we can't come up with something satisfactory to them, they're going to, they're going to take away our reimbursement money. So we're meeting, Judge Branstadter and I are meeting this afternoon with Mr. Eldridge and come up with the most efficient thing we can possibly offer to them and try to negotiate something to as little cost as possible. We're hoping, uh, that maybe a half contract will be enough, at least for now. If it doesn't go any higher, the loads, I mean, uh, so that's 25,000.
25, yes.
And if not, then we'd have to go to a full contract, which is 50. So the consequences of not doing that, of course, is that you lose the, you know, 130-ish thousand dollars a year in reimbursement that you get, so it's, it's not a, it's not a tough math problem to figure out, but.
The reimbursement, Judge, um, will not change regardless of the number of contracts we have?
No, it's half of what we expend on those type of cases, so it would go, actually go up. The written amount of reimbursement would actually go up.
Oh, you think it would, we would see an increase?
Yeah, because we, because we're spending more.
Okay, okay.
But I mean, you know, that's not a good.
No, I mean, I just.
If I give you 100, you give me 50.
Would change.
Right, yeah, it will, yeah.
For every, for every attorney we put on?
It's fractional of what we spend, yeah. Yeah, it's meant to be a percentage reimbursement.
I see, all right.
Yeah, so we will get part of that back. So, but, so I'm not here to ask you to vote on anything right now, but I just, knowing in government, especially in tight economic budgeting times, like surprises, so that's why I told you last year that this might be coming. Here I am trying to keep you updated. That's all this is about this morning. Just letting you know that's coming. And we're getting on it as quick as we can. I get the email yesterday and we have a meeting set with Mr. Eldridge this afternoon. Since we get out of that, then we'll set a meeting with a representative from the state. And I'll do my level best to keep a lid on it. That's what I can promise you. We'll just try to do what we can do. Certainly, we can't put ourselves in a position to lose our reimbursement money. That would be catastrophic. So we're going to end up having to do whatever we need to do to make that happen. That's all.
You said our reimbursement's been running in 100?
Uh, yeah, I, I'll just send out an email yesterday with the last year's reimbursements per quarter. And it's done on a quarterly basis, so it's not a flat amount each quarter, you know. But I think it's historically in recent years, it's run around 130. There's the email apparently.
Yeah, there it is, okay.
So I think it's in that neighborhood, 130, 135, something like that.
So, yeah, we're looking at an increased cost of 25 to 50 or, or a decreased revenue of 130 to 140,000.
Right.
Take your pick.
That's, that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you don't spend the, hopefully 25,000, then you lose the 130, you know, or 50,000 if we have to go to a full contract. In the, I did the math when they sent out the third quarter results in the fourth quarter last year. And if I added all the overages, the, they have a rating system. It's on a 1.0 system. And if I added, uh, which you're not supposed to go, each attorney's not supposed to be above a 1.0. So some of them were 1.12, 1.18, 1.07, you know, four of them were over. If I added up their overages cumulatively, then they would have fit under a .5, which means at that time, you know, in December, I could have come in here and asked for a half contract and that would have placated them. But since they offered up without me even asking, they'll just allow it to roll on for another quarter without any action, I went ahead and accepted that.
Yeah.
So I'll have to look at the numbers and see what we're doing, but I'll, I'll try to keep it down as much as I can, obviously. That's where we're at, so.
And this will be an action that'll have to be taken in 18?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I think, I can't imagine them going in there now in the first quarter, me and Judge Branstadter and I meeting with the state and them saying, well, you're way out of compliance, but we're going to let you wait until.
A new budget.
Until, you know, FY 19, quarter one, to do something about it. I don't see that happening.
Okay.
But if they offer it up, just like I did last year, I'll take it.
All right.
But they're not going to do that, I'm pretty sure, yeah, yeah. My guess is they'll give us some kind of 60 days or something like that, or 90 days, maybe one quarter to get, to get in compliance. I'm just making that up. I have no idea. But they're not going to allow us the rest of the year to figure it out. I, I'm certain of that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I appreciate the update.
Okay, I'll bring you to the rest of the bad news when I get it.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
All the department reports we have. Do we have any mail? Old business, we don't have any of that. New business, we have Jeff Dossett Consulting give us a proposal.
I'll let Jeff Kemper speak.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm the other Jeff. I'm Jeff Kemper with Jeff Dossett from Dossett Consulting. And say thanks to Jane for giving us a place on the agenda. Just tell you, as Jeff is handing out a little piece of information, just a little bit of background, really about how the two Jeffs got together. Jeff and I have known each other for many years and both at different times in our lives on county councils. Myself with Tippecanoe County and Jeff Dossett with Montgomery County. Jeff then got a higher calling both to become a county clerk and a county auditor in Montgomery County. And I think because of that, it puts him in better position, certainly than I, to know how some of the financial dealings go on and how important, just as your judge just stated, to, to get some reimbursements back from the various sources. As a councilman in Tippecanoe, I found out that almost after the fact of what company we were using at the time to get some reimbursements, and I talked to our auditor and he said, well, who are we using? And he told me, and how much money do we get back? Well, clearly, the fees we were paying were significantly smaller than the amount of the reimbursements. And Jeff Dossett will explain to you momentarily that Jeff, after his elected portion of his life, he spent a little time with Maximus, has a pretty good feel for how they've operated. Jeff saw a chance to do it perhaps a little better and a little more detail. And I have found, and I've been with Jeff these last two years and trying to lighten his load, but have a chance to meet with folks like you and tell about some of the successes. So I want to have Jeff go into just a little bit of detail, but we've been, uh, I'm very pleased that I, as I've gotten around the state and talked to counties particularly that have come on board with Dossett Consulting, been very pleased with Jeff's level of detail in filling out the reports, meeting with the auditor, the other department heads to find out what cost could be reimbursed. So I'll let Jeff give you a little background and then see if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. And, and I didn't hire Jeff so we could keep the name tags, simple, but, actually, we did it because we're getting on in age and we know each other's name. As Jeff was talking about, I've been in county government for 18 years in Montgomery County. That's over by Crawfordsville. Spent most of my time as a county councilman. And then I became a clerk and then I lost my mind and became monitor. Tough job. I've also been the AIC president back in 2007, so I went up through the AIC chairs and, and the Board of Directors through the AIC. So I've got a pretty good understanding of county government. I left the auditor's office and was hired by Maximus to be their state director. And so that's where I learned the cost, cost of allocation plans and direct claiming for the clerk, direct claiming for the prosecutor, and direct claiming for the 4D courts. So I left there in 2010, didn't think I would go back. I got involved with a company on GIS. And one of my old clients said, hey, I want you to take a look at something. I'm not sure that our current vendor is getting everything back. So I, I took a look and sure enough, they were missing about $1,000 a month. So I got back into it in 2012, part-time, and then in 2013, went out full-time in this company. And as you can see, I'm, I'm up to 30 counties in the state of Indiana. One of the things that is different about me, now we do the, if you're familiar with cost allocation plans, that's where we get the federal grant money back to the county through the cost allocation plan. And right now, your federal grant is the Child's Board 4D office. So anything that your clerk and prosecutor, that they do with Title 4D, we're able to get the indirect cost back to the county, and that's such things as electricity, telephone bills, things that can't be directly attributed to the 4D program, but can be indirect, such as the liability insurance and the depreciation of buildings and so forth can be reimbursed. And so that's how the cost plan comes about, getting that money back to the county. My experience, I'm the only company that does this, who is a Hoosier-owned Indiana company. I, I have experience in the county government. I'm the only vendor that has the experience in the county government. So I know as a councilman, not everything is paid for out of the auditor's budget, not everything for the clerk is paid for out of the clerk's budget. You could pay for something out of CUMCAP development, or maybe something's paid out of the commissioner's budget that benefits the clerk or the auditor. Those things are important to know when we're doing a cost allocation plan, so we make sure that we get the maximum reimbursement back to the county. And those are the things that I bring to the table, my knowledge and skills, working with county budgets and understanding county budgets, making sure that we're being thorough and getting everything back. When I was a county councilman, I always asked my auditor, and feel free to ask Jane these questions a lot, but I asked my auditor, I said, what's this money we're giving to this company to get federal reimbursement back? And the auditor at the time said, I don't know, Jeff, we, we get a lot of money back. And I, as a councilman, I said, well, that's okay, but what, what do they do? I mean, what, what is this money? What, what happens? And the auditor didn't know. And so the second year this came up, I asked, I thought, well, I'll give her time to find out. The second year, I asked the auditor the same question. And she said, Jeff, we get like $30,000 back and it only costs us $4,000 or $5,000. I said, well, that sounds good, but are we ever going to have to pay that money back? Is, what, where's that money coming from? Why are we getting it back? What did we do to get that back? They had no idea. So what I do is, working with my clients, I don't want my clients to be in that position. I want to be able to have either a commissioner, a councilman, or just a member of the public to be able to ask my client, what is that money you're paying Dossett Consulting for? So I sit down with my clients and I'll sit down with the auditor. I'll go through the cost allocation plan. I'll explain how they can audit it and review it. It is a rather complicated plan, but it's not so complicated that you and I can understand it. Obviously, if I can understand it as a former councilman, I can, you can understand it too. So it's not that difficult. It's just a matter of someone explaining it. And that's what I provide, is the quality of service that I provide back to the county. The other thing is, if the auditor's very familiar with the plan and what we're looking for and what we're putting into the plan, the auditor then becomes a part of the plan so that they can say, oh, hey, by the way, we had this expenditure. Were you aware we did this to the courthouse? Or were you aware that we did this? Some of those expenses can be reimbursed. Or if they're looking at maybe a new security guards or something, or working with a security system, she can ask, hey, Jeff, is this going to be able, are we going to be able to get some of this reimbursed or not? So those are the kind of things, working together with the elected official, we can get a much better plan for you. And that's what I provide, is that kind of knowledge and that kind of experience. So I, I'd appreciate the opportunity of working with Fayette County. When I was at Maximus, I actually did your cost plan. That was many years ago, but anyway. Do you have any questions?
So basically, um, you work off of a percentage of what you get back, or how, how does that?
We, we get a, a fee, a direct fee for that, or we can do what we call a contingency contract. Continency means that I would get a percentage of what you get back. So if we set it at 5%, then 5% of what you get back is what I would get back. If you get nothing, I don't get anything. If you get very minimal, I get minimal. The thing about a contingency contract is you cannot use that, you cannot pay my fee from the incentive money. And that incentive money, it means you're not using the county general dollars. If you pay me a flat fee, it can, it can be paid for out of the incentive money. And I'm not sure where you're paying for it now. Maybe Jane knows, but I don't know.
Good times off my head.
Yeah.
Can you share with them, Jeff, most, most counties that we do business with pay a flat fee, yes?
Most counties pay a flat fee for it because they, you can use the plan for different things. I mean, the plan, once it's developed, we can use it for any other federal grants that you have to find out what the administrative costs could be charged back to the grant. Then it would have to be paid for out of county general somehow. If you're using it for just the Title 4D Child's Board expense, then you can use the incentive money, which is a federal incentive money that's given to the county to use and it's not property tax dollars, or you can pay for it with property tax dollars. If you pay for it with property tax dollars, it's reimbursable through the plan. The other things that the plan can be used for, and we don't really do much of this in the state of Indiana, but it, in other states, they do it really well. You can use it for, let's say, for instance, you have an EMA grant or you have a health department grant. If it's a federal grant, then you. If it's a federal grant, then you can utilize this cost plan to get your portion of the administrative cost reimbursed. And that's cost for you managing the grant, for Jane's office managing the grant, the treasurer's office managing that grant, because there is a cost to the county to manage that grant money. You can use that, then you can get from that grant, have that grant pay the county general back for that cost, if it's allowed.
Do you do all the same things that Maximus does?
Yeah.
So you're actually in competition?
Yes. They're my competitor.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming and talking to us. And we'll talk some more. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a contract for a treasurer's consulting agreement. The audit that was done by the state requested that we have some errors that had been done in the treasurer's office, and they started back in 2011. And that's been carried forward for several years, and they've never requested anything, but this year, they decided we should do something about that. And so we have hired, or have a contract here with a prior treasurer who had everything, was all right when she left office, but things have gone downhill there for a while. So we have, would like to have her as a consultant, and to try to get these errors corrected. And she's going to do so on a part-time basis as a direct consultant. And she will not be an employee of the county, but will be a consultant.
Jane, did you say that Colin had already looked at this?
Yes. Colin's gone through the contract, and it's been approved, and it's been changed to take care of all the years that need to be.
I will move to the approved consulting agreement.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve consulting agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
I think it's just for you to sign in.
Yeah.
You know, Debbie?
Yeah. And we have claims and payroll. Accept a motion to approve those.
I'll move to approve claims and payroll.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Three ayes. We'll sign the claims and payroll. And move along. Okay. The conflict of interest needs signed, also we have it. Okay. The conflict of interest needs signed by all three of you.
Carl Scheid.
Okay.
Are you ready for me?
Yes.
Did I not make it on the agenda?
No, you're not on the agenda.
I'm very sorry. I thought I was taking care of it.
But I have a note here from the auditor that we need to recognize you, and.
Well, thank you very much.
Let you talk about the pinwheels.
Yes. So, maybe I'm a good thing to end up on, a much lighter note than some of the heavier topics you guys had today. Offer a peace offering to the pinwheels, how about that?
Thank you.
Yes, my name's Carl Scheid, and I am part of the Fayette County Every Child Matters Child Abuse Awareness Month.
Okay, thank you.
And in years past, I've come here for permission to put pinwheels and sign for Prevent Child Abuse Awareness Month in the courthouse lawn. We have a parade, it's on April the 26th. We've had a parade for the last three or four years with the Head Start and preschool kids, about 130, as well as the mayor, and Dan, and the fire department, and the police. And we have a nice parade from family video down to the courthouse. Now, last year, we had a resource tent, and we asked your permission to put a tent up in the parking lot, and those kind of things. We're not going to do that this year. We're going to have the parade. The kids will end up in front of the courthouse. This year, they're going to plant the pinwheels, they're going to carry them down. Pinwheels are always a problem, because the kids love them, and then the teachers hate them, because they get on the bus with pinwheels and start poking each other. So this year, they're going to come, instead of us collecting them, they're going to get to actually plant the garden themselves, which would be really nice. We'll have a short presentation by Dan and the mayor. We sing a nice song with the kids, and they load it up on the bus and head out. So one thing I'm here to do is seek your permission to do that. And the other thing is, information, our group has really grown. This year, we're actually an official chartered group of the Prevent Child Abuse Council, and our group is growing. And then on April the 14th, we're going to do a 5K family fun run in Roberts Park in the morning. We're going to have a resource tent there with silly safaris, all kinds of family fun activities to talk about awareness and help keep our kids safe and happy.
Very good. We appreciate what you do, sir.
Any questions? Can I sign up anybody for a 5K family fun run?
I'm having trouble walking.
We could put you at a booth. I hope everybody does come out. It's an awful lot of fun. The kids really enjoy it, the families enjoy it. A lot of the presentations I heard about this morning was bringing our community back together, and these are actually two events that really highlight what we're doing. We're one of those few parades, actually, in April for Prevent Child Abuse Awareness. So that's really fun. And if you can come out on the 26th, and kind of line the street, and cheer the kids on, I guarantee you'll have a great time as well.
I have meant every year to try to meet them up at the other end of the lot and walk down the street, but that's not happened yet, so I don't know if I'll make it this year or not.
Well, if you're having a hard time walking, maybe we can put you in a fire truck or a squad car. I don't know, there might be some people I know that can arrange that. We would appreciate all the participation we can get from everyone. It's a great event, and one of the things we want to do, reason, part of the reason, not to belabor this, but part of the reason is moving, doing a fun walk on a Saturday is what we really want to do eventually is move this parade to a weekend, so the whole community can come out, so we can really, I mean, someday, you know, I don't know, have floats and a band, and really celebrate kids and families while recognizing abuse and neglect, but celebrating how far families have come. And we have an awful lot of success stories.
Okay. Will you be, the pinwheels, will you be putting them in front and back of the courthouse, or just out front, or?
Usually, just put them out front, but.
They'll be out for the whole month of April?
Yes. Yes, I'll put them up the last week of March, or actually, I'll put this, how will we do that? I'll put the sign out the last week of March, and I probably will plant a pinwheel garden, and then the morning of the parade, I'll pull up all those pinwheels so the kids can plant them. So, I'm going to say the last week of April is when the parade is, so we want pinwheels up all, the whole month.
The whole month.
We'll also have them in the pots down Main Street, down Central, and you'll see yard signs, and we have billboards going up. We really try and decorate the town for the month of April.
Madam President, I'd make a motion to allow them to utilize the courthouse square as they see fit, front, back, if you'd like.
Agreed.
The whole square for the pinwheel activity.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to allow him to place pinwheels all over the courthouse lawn.
Thank you very much. The other thing is, Bob has done a really nice job with a couple articles. I would emphasize, too, if there are businesses, individuals who would like pinwheels in their yards, we have yard signs about "Yay Big!" that say, "They're just not pinwheels. They're a call to action." So if there are people that want those pinwheels or yard signs, we, the last week of March, we go around and put those, put all those up. And not only do we put them up, then at the end of April, 1st of May, we'll come back and pick up all those, so we don't leave.
How do those people get a hold of you for that?
They can call my office at (765) 827-2045.
Okay.
That'd be great. Yes, and we're, and again, thanks to Bob. And the newspaper, we've gotten a lot of phone calls already. We usually put up well over 50 signs and pinwheel gardens throughout the community, and we're already exceeding that number. So that's really good. I'm really glad to see the community supporting this. And again, hopefully, we'll move it to a weekend one day, and have an all-day celebration about families and kids.
That sounds like a good plan.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that all, Clint?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. To adjourn.
Aye.
Aye.